Welcome to the September 4, 2012 meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Council members Friedman.
Here.
Menuchyan.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Quintero.
Here. The pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Menuchyan and the invocation by Chaplain Sarkis Kadamani-Nasian from Glendale Memorial Hospital.
Please join me in the salute to our nation's flag. Ready, begin. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, with the republic of which this stands. Almighty God, in the name of this Lord, in the presence of Jesus.
Standing for the invocation.
Let us pray. Almighty God, we come before you this evening with thankfulness for the privilege of serving as public servants, and we ask for your wisdom and your guidance upon our councilmembers, our leaders. We thank you for their service and ask that you would guide them in their decisions, in any plans that will be made this evening, and we thank you, and we also ask for your blessing upon them and their families, and for your protection. And we ask all this in your holy name. Amen.
And we have your report.
Agenda for the September 4, 2012 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on August 30, 2012, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Next.
Next is agenda preview for the meetings of September 11, 2012.
Ms. Spears.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, for September 11, 2012, for the Glendale Housing Authority, we have no business agenda items. That afternoon at 3:00 PM, we do have a Glendale City Council and Housing Authority meeting. This is a joint meeting, and it's a public hearing. Director of Community Development, this is regarding the Glendale Triangle Project to be located at 3900 San Fernando Road. Also in the afternoon, we do have a notice of a special public meeting of the Glendale City Council, and we have three items. Director of Public Works, this is approval of the final map of tract number 6998 for three commercial condominium units and 26 residential condominium unit subdivision, which are located at 230 through 240 South Jackson Street. We have a public hearing. Director of Community Development, this is regarding proposed Brandon Wilson Project, which is located at 124 West Wilson Avenue. And lastly, Director of Community Development, this is regarding the Metro Tropico Station Grant Project. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor. Of note, on September 11, at 6:00 PM, the City Council meeting, at this time, we have no agenda items, and I would anticipate that it would be canceled.
At 3B, we have a presentation by Representative Southern California Gas on their advanced metering program. He's on his way, so let's move to City Council and staff comments.
All right, may I, sir? Just two items that we would look to pull. Item 5D, that was held over from last meeting. We think it'll be two meetings from now. Is that right, Mr. Zern? The Fairmont Park? Okay.
Yes, it is 18.
As soon as would be the 18th. And then, secondly, we do have an announcement at your leisure, when the council is ready, to have Chief Probst from our Fire Department come forward to talk about a 9/11 tribute next week.
I will do that at staff comments. Okay, Mr. Bearden.
Yes, actually, I do have a quick announcement to make. On behalf of our staff, we have a... The City Clerk's Office and the County Registrar of Los Angeles County are teaming up to present a deputy registrar training, September 10, 2012. It'll take place from 5:00 PM to 6:30 PM in the Glendale Police Department's small community room. That's located at 131 North Isabel Street. People can... Anyone interested in attending this can RSVP with our office by calling Leo Zallin at the number listed there on the screen at 818-550-4386. And what a deputy registrar training is, it's... Once you go through this training... Once you go through this training, you'll be able to register people in accordance to all of the requisite laws under the government elections code, or sorry, the California elections code. And it's important for anyone out there... There's a lot of voter registration drives currently happening in anticipation of this important election coming up in November, and so there's a lot of community groups out there. I know a lot of people are possibly already getting ready for the upcoming April municipal elections. So this is an important training for anyone who's interested in doing a voter registration drive. And upon completion, they will receive a certificate from the County of Los Angeles Registrar and Recorder's Office, saying that they are a deputy registrar. So again, that's September 10, 2012, from 5 to 6:30 PM. It's open to anyone in the public. You don't have to be affiliated with an organization. If you're just interested and want to know the laws and the rules governing this, you're welcome to attend. Thank you.
Okay. City Council comments?
I want to give a report.
Feel free to...
Your microphone, Councilman. Then just speak louder.
Well, I went up... I tried the Bodry Drive mountain bike trail last week, and with the... Over the bar mountain bike club, which rides a number of trails in Glendale. The ride was listed as beginner, intermediate, but it was more like... Thank you. I didn't take these pictures. My good friend Mark Sturdivan took them, who was there but did not join us because it was his anniversary. And I started off pretty good, but I made it halfway up. That individual on the right, the elderly gentleman, helped me... Dale helped me get halfway up. The telling question that he asked me approximately halfway up my ride was, "Are you going to die?" I said, "I'll let you know when I do," because it was a very steep ride. It was much more steep than I was used to, and it was... I made it halfway up, and I came back down. But I will not give up. Next time they go up Bodry Drive, I will be up there again and try it again. So there's the crew. We had a great time watching me try to go up there. Hopefully, everyone can be encouraged and use the bikes to go to work. Like I said, I go to work once a week with my bike, and I save on gas, and I get to see the city more. So those of you who are interested in mountain biking skills and training, Concerned Off-Road Biking Association has a monthly clinic at Malibu State Park, if you're interested. Go attend. It's the first Saturday of every month. So that is... Thank you.
Really recommending knee pads, Dayglo.
I am looking for...
I really think you need a little more. I'm looking for knee pads and elbow pads, actually. Any other? Ms. Weaver.
Yes, I'd like to ask our city manager to respond to the countless number of emails that we've all received regarding cell towers in the city. When I got my first one, I says, "What the heck is this all about?" So...
Over the last couple of weeks, we, at first, were receiving a trickle of interest letters and calls and emails from residents in the Rancho neighborhood, because Verizon has proposed...
Rancho San Rafael.
Rancho San Rafael.
Rancho's a different neighborhood.
I'm sorry, not the different one.
Let's carry me there.
Yes, not the... This is on the east side, not the southwest. Regarding some proposed cell towers that Verizon is proposing to put up, and this last weekend, it seems there was a drive to send the same letter to all members of the council and staff from neighbors in this particular neighborhood. So we have a process that is outlined in our ordinance. Verizon is going through that process. Certainly, at the appropriate time, we will take stock of all of these contacts from all of these residents. In the meantime, our office staff is responding to them one by one by one to let them know that we have logged their concerns, and they will be presented to council at the appropriate time as part of the public record.
I'd just like to add one statement. Now, when you all send the identical letter, it kind of loses its impact. When it was a smoking ordinance, I got over 400 emails, all identical. You got feelings for something, please try to originate an email to us than just the roboemails. I think it'd be much more effective. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. Staff? I see...
I'm sorry, sir. Can we bring up Chief Probst?
Yeah. Let's start with the chief.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Quintero, councilmembers, Mr. Choa, city staff and the public. My name is Tom Probst, Battalion Chief, Glendale Fire Department. And I'm here tonight just to make a brief announcement to you. Next Tuesday, September 11, the Fire Department, on behalf of Chief Scoggins and the members, will be hosting a tribute at all nine of our fire stations commemorating the events of 9/11. 11 years ago, America suffered a devastating tragedy in which nearly 3,000 Americans lost their lives in the World Trade Centers, the Pentagon, and at Shanksville, Pennsylvania. During those attacks, 343 firefighters were lost, as well as 72 police officers. The commemoration of the 11th anniversary of September 11, the Fire Department will host a brief ceremony in honor of all those lost their lives on that day. On Tuesday, September 11, Verdugo Dispatch, our dispatch organization, will announce a tribute to all 44 fire stations in the Verdugo system and have a moment of silence for those lost. In addition, each of you, as well as all city employees and any members of the public who'd like to attend, are encouraged and invited to meet at any fire station in Glendale, where we will all be conducting a ceremony simultaneously. A brief timeline of those events, at 6:45, our personnel will be gathering at the flag poles in front of each fire station, and at 6:59... Excuse me, 6:50, flags will be raised and lowered in honor of those lost. At 6:59, Verdugo Dispatch will make an announcement in honor of those who sacrificed their lives on 9/11. A moment of silence will unanimously be observed by all those attending those 44 fire stations in the Verdugo system. Following that, there'll be time for each of you or any member of the community to make some comments, if they wish, as well as a moment of silence, followed by a prayer, and that will end our ceremony. So if you're available next Tuesday morning at 6:45, we'd love to have you. Any City of Glendale employee or anyone from the public, attend any of our nine fire stations for that tribute. Thank you very much.
Chief, what were the numbers? 443 firefighters?
343 firefighters, 72 police officers, and 3,000 total lost that day during that tragedy. Thank you.
I have a question. Are those figures included in firefighter injury and fatality figures? Do you know? Some people come and they say that firefighting is quite a safe job. Would you agree with that?
Well, that year, they were included in the 2001 statistics. On average, every year, about 100 firefighters lose their lives in the line of duty throughout the U.S., volunteers or paid professionals. And right now, as you know, we have a fire burning just east of us, where we have several hundred firefighters on the line right now, working 24 hours a day, seven days a week. They don't anticipate that being contained for probably another five to six days. We also have fires burning up in Northern California, where we've had a couple, two actually, near misses there, where some firefighters nearly lost their lives battling those fires in Northern California.
Stay safe, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, I see the Southern California Gas representative has arrived.
Oh, yeah.
It was a bit late. It's going to be duly reported to his supervisors, but we're going to let him come to the podium and give us your name for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Tony Tartaglia of the Gas Company. I appreciate it, City Council and others that have invited us here this evening. I guess you have duly noted it over the airwaves, so I guess it's done. I'm glad you invited me here today, and I wanted to talk a little bit about the Southern California Gas Company's advanced meter program. In April 2010, the California Public Utilities Commission authorized us to change out... Start the process of changing out 6 million of our meters with what we are calling Advanced Meter System and Equipment. For lack of a better term, this is an evolution from manual meter reading to automated meter reading. And so it was told to me a long time ago, a picture's worth 1,000 words. So we have a short video that we'd like to show you and the audience that'll give you a debut of what the expectations are in this, and then I'll get right back to you.
Southern California Gas Company is investing in new meter technology to provide enhanced services for our customers by adding a communication device to all residential and business meters. The Advanced Meter, which in most cases will be installed on the existing gas meter, will automatically and securely transmit your gas usage to our customer service and billing center. A few weeks prior to your upgrade, we will send you a letter by mail explaining the process. The letter will inform you approximately when the installation is scheduled to take place in your area. In most cases, there will be no interruption to your gas service, and you won't need to be at home for the installation. You only need to provide clear access to the gas meter. When we arrive at your home, one of our technicians will go directly to the gas meter and perform the work. During the process, the installer will add a battery-powered communication device to the natural gas meter. Each day, the Advanced Meter Module will turn on for a fraction of a second to securely transmit your gas usage data. Following the installation, the technician will leave a notice on your door, letting you know the meter has been upgraded successfully. Once the Advanced Meter has been verified, a meter reader will no longer need to access your property to read the meter. We'll notify you when your gas usage information is available for you to view online. Then, rather than wait for your monthly bill to see how much gas you have used, you'll be able to get that information with just a few clicks of the mouse or swipe of a finger. Within my account, you'll find a number of helpful new tools to view your hourly gas usage, compare your monthly bills, and set up an action plan for savings. And in the future, you'll be able to sign up to receive alerts if it looks like your gas bill may exceed an amount you predetermined. Once installed, Advanced Meters can help empower customers with more frequent information to better manage their energy use and costs. You can find out more about this service online at socalgas.com. Just use the search term "Advanced Meter." Advanced Meter. It's an enhanced service from the company that has been trusted for safe and reliable service for over 140 years.
As you can see, this is a battery-operated unit. I brought two AA batteries. As I told most of you as we met at another time, these batteries will last 20 years, and I'm hoping for 10, because I'll be retired by then. But that's what I'm told. So what I'd like to talk to you a little bit about today is the preparation for the deployment of our Advanced Meter System, which is scheduled in Glendale for the second quarter of next year. We have been spending the last two years in preparation for that, getting ready to install our communication network. And what that involves, I want to go into a little bit with you on a PowerPoint. But before I start, I have two people with the Gas Company with me here this evening. One of them will be coming up to talk to you a little bit about our customer outreach, which we are going to be doing next year, and that is Lizette Verduco, which is our customer outreach manager way in the back there. And also next to her is Martha Solano, and Martha is our site acquisition manager. She has been the one going out selecting sites for our communication network that will be installed shortly in Glendale. So I have a quick PowerPoint for you, and if you move to the second page, as I said tonight, I want to talk to you about what we have been preparing for in the last two years. We've been working with Glendale for the last almost 12 months in anticipation of this communication network rollout. Now, before everyone looks at this and says, "Oh, my God, here comes a cell tower. Here comes some kind of communication network." As I pointed out to you with the meter, that that's battery-operated. The communication network itself doesn't use more than a 40-watt bulb of electricity. If we install this unit on our own poles, it is solar-operated, and it operates at the same fraction of time period that you've seen for the meter, which we anticipate to be less than two minutes a year in terms of its total operating time. Each one will be... We're looking in Glendale to either co-locate, which that means we've been working with Glendale Water and Power and Public Works to find adequate facilities in Glendale, and co-location would occur on streetlights, or we would install our own system. As you see here, we have to put 4,000 of these communication towers throughout our 6 million meter-serving territory. Now, 4,000 seems a lot, but we serve from Fresno to the San Diego border and from the ocean to the Nevada-Arizona border. So I have 6 million meters. I divide that by 4,000, and it's roughly 1,500 meters that we're talking about per data collection unit. We also need to have overlap of these units, so we try to have at least three of them overlap each other in case one of the units go down. These, as you see, are mostly pole-mounted. We will have 18 in Glendale, and I'll go into a location of those preliminary at this point. We have not installed any in Glendale. And they... It says between 30 and 45 feet. That is actually coming down as technology improves. We're at about 30 feet. In some cases, we can do 25 feet in terms of our pole tower. That is a representation of a cement or marbleite pole, if you see it, and that is the same material used in a streetlight. So we meet with Public Works, Water and Power, talk to them about the appropriate installation if we are doing a standalone site, and that can be wood, marbleite, cement, or steel, whichever is preferable for the area. And that is some of the things. The unit on top that you see there, the box, if you will, not the panel behind it, is what we call our data collection unit, that houses the guts of the device that receives the information and transmits it to our billing system. The two antennas you see on the side are what I would call whip antennas, to give you an analogy or a similarity to what it is. It looks like an antenna on top of a police vehicle, or for some of us older ones, remember our old antennas on cars. Similar to that, it's about two and a half feet tall. On each side, those receive the information from the meters, and the transmission device inside sends the signal to our billing center. And then behind that is the solar panel that would be on that, and that was facing, of course, to the best area of the sun. Next slide, please. Here's a depiction, and I apologize, they're blue. I tried to get these yellow. Here's a depiction of the 18 data collection units in Glendale. As you can see, they cluster around the mountainous areas. As I've told you, this is a very low-tech device, but it doesn't go around mountains. It has to be able to see each other and have the ability to communicate with another tower if there's an issue. So you notice in South Glendale, there is only one below the 134, and out in the eastern section, there's one or two out there. But as we go up Chevy Chase, as we go up Glen Oaks Canyon, as we go into the Verdugo Woodlands, the number of those towers do increase, or data collection units do increase because of the proximity of the mountains. Next slide, please. I just wanted to give you a brief list of where we're looking at locations, and at the urging of Councilmember Laura Friedman, I personally have gone out to almost all of the standalone sites and given information to those directly impacted by those installations. And that means if I was installing a standalone pole between two houses, I notified those two houses and the two houses across the street, or anybody that had a Viewshed issue. And we've had some quite lively discussions, and they've also given us some information about how we can move certain things around to at least be as less impactful to those areas. I have two sites down at the bottom that say TBD, because we're still evaluating whether we might be able to do a co-location in that area. And I know... So as you run down it, you've got one on Orange Street out in the Commercial District, down where Billy's Deli is, and onward down. And again, we have copies of these slides available for the public if they wish to take it with them. Next slide, please. I wanted to talk to you a little bit about this outreach that I've done, and then I'm going to invite Lizette Verduco to come up and do the outreach related to the meter installation. As I said, I've gone out and personally met with the standalone sites. We are also planning on having this particular meeting. We may have an additional public outreach meeting that offers the ability for them to come and ask questions. Information is available to everyone on the website of what I'm offering you and more. Also, each of the designated data collection sites will receive a letter no later than 14 days before the construction is to take place, that if they have any questions, there will be the construction number on it, and my information will be available to them as well. That is for the data collection unit outreach. And we are open to other suggestions if you have it. I've scheduled to go out to the Homeowners Coordinating Council on October 1. I have reached out to some of the... At Mayor Quintero's request, to some of the local homeowners groups, and informed them about what's going on in their area, and I continue... I plan to continue that as the process rolls forward. There are a lot of particulars that Steve Zern and his staff on both Public Works and Glendale Water Power are still working out with this to facilitate the co-location, but I feel very positive that that's going to be moving forward fairly soon. So at this time, I would like to invite Lizette up to just give you a brief overview. Oh, I'm sorry.
Couple of questions, if you don't mind.
Please, go right ahead.
You said that the meter would track... That you could track your hourly usage on the Internet, on the web-based application, I guess. If it's going to transmit once a day, is it transmitting hourly information? If it transmits once a day, how can you track hourly usage?
Forgive me if I said once a day. It's supposed to transfer up to four times a day. It's only less than two minutes transmission time per year, but it's up to four.
Every time it transmits, how many?
Oh, it's microseconds.
Okay.
I mean, to get two minutes a year, it's less... I think we're coming down to about 1.4 minutes in totality, but it's microseconds. It's a quick flash.
So when it transmits four times a day, it transmits information for the hourly usage? Or does it transmit information at that moment in time?
It will transmit whatever it's done between the last transmission and the transmission forward, plus any alarms that might be evident at that time.
And I'm sure you get this question all the time, and I'm very interested in the network that will be implemented. How does it compare with the smart meters? We've had a number of individuals who are concerned about smart meters. They want options of opting out from the program. How does this compare to smart meters? I know there is no digital screen on the meter itself.
I can't speak to the duration of the smart meter. I'm not quite sure how that technology works in terms of its duration. I would leave that to Glendale Water Power to speak of that. However, you asked the question of an opt-out. We have applied to the commission for an opt-out for any resident that wishes not to have this. There would be a one-time fee associated with it, as well as a monthly fee to have a meter reader come out and read their meter manually, if you wish. So that will be available, and as soon as we get the approval from the commission. We applied...
Which commission?
Oh, California Public Utilities Commission. We are...
Not on Glendale Water Power.
No, no, not the Glendale Water Bar. The independently-owned utilities in the state of California, which is Pacific Gas and Electric, Southern California Gas Company, Southern California Edison, and San Diego Gas and Electric, as well as a few other ones that infringe into the state, are regulated by the California Public Utilities Commission. We have to take direction from them.
I understand. The other question is, and what was my concern, the smart meters, will these meters communicate with each other before transmitting? Is it like, you know, piggybacking on each other before transmitting to the communication?
No. As I said, these are extremely low-tech. All these meters do are transmitting digits. They will transfer the account number. They'll transfer no personal information associated with the client. They'll transfer the meter read and any alarms associated with that to the data collection site.
Directly, without transmitting it to each...
Directly.
...all the meters around.
Right. It's my understanding they cannot communicate with each other.
Okay. And what kind of batteries are those? I need some.
You like those? I'm looking to get a few of these myself. You like that? These are the good kind of...
How often they will be replaced? Every 20 years?
It is my understanding these will last 20 years. That is what we've been told by the manufacturer. That is what we've been told by the manufacturer in operation of this device. Now, you understand, you put a meter out in the middle of the sun, 24, you know, 12 hours of the day, it may lower the life, but we've been told it would be 12 hours, 20 years.
Right.
And I will have some more information for you about some of the electromagnetic issues, if you have that.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate it.
To be clear, the gas company and Mr. Tartaglia are making this presentation, but in fact, we will not be able to hold back this technology.
We are different.
Yes. That runs it, and that also includes the siting. While you can work with neighborhood groups and GWP, in fact, you can site these towers wherever you feel you need to accommodate the system.
Well, yes, Mr. Mayor, as you've said it, but us being different than a telecommunications company, we have a contract with the city of Glendale called our franchise, which allows us to have our infrastructure in the right-of-way. And the right-of-way are the streets and the parkways. But absolutely, we want to work with you to make this at least impactful for the residents.
But I just want to be clear that, in fact, we're not controlling this situation. It's the gas company and the PUC that does. GWP we control, but we don't with the gas company.
I'm glad you're saying that, but as your attorney would say, you control us as our franchise controls us.
Friedman.
Yeah, well, first, thanks for the presentation, for giving us a heads-up, and thanks especially for reaching out to the impacted property owners and businesses. I assume you're going to the businesses, too, but it's the property, the residences that I'm most concerned about. I'm curious, because this is basically a different incarnation of smart meters. This is doing the same thing that Glendale has done in the last year, you know, in a slightly different way, but it's the same technology. So I'm curious as to what the gas company's investment is, and we've come under fire from some people saying that the smart meter investment that we made was a waste of money. And I'm curious why, if that's the case, the gas company is now doing this. So what is your investment, and what do you hope to gain from that investment? And do you consider your investment in this smart meter technology to be a waste of money?
No, we don't. We do not think it's a waste of money. We think it's a wise investment. First off, we're investing, I think it's over $2 billion.
$2 billion.
$2 billion with a B. Now, we have 6 million meters. You have roughly 80,000 or so meters, 87,000 water meters and so-and-so electric meters. We see big benefits for our customers associated with this investment. First off, having manual meter reading, if I have an issue go on with my meter, it would take me 30 days for the meter reader to come out there and fix it, and then come out there, notice it, and then another 30 days to fix it. That's 60 days of inconvenience to the customer, of a customer receiving a high bill, versus this will alarm us if there's an issue associated with the meter. We could put an algorithm in the computer system that will differentiate usage on an average pattern, tell us that there's something wrong with the meter, and we can go out and make the correction. Secondly, we're taking 1,000 vehicles off the road, which is over 100,000 tons of greenhouse gases a year. Now, you say, well, what about the meter readers? We also are making the choice to bring our meter-reading staff, our full-time meter-reading staff, onboard and join us in the conversion process, which is going to take five years, and then become service technicians of these devices. So we see real benefits associated with it. Now, those differentiated benefits or those extended benefits are the customers going to know their hourly usage. You say, well, is that good? Is that bad? Is it indifferent? It puts it in your mind what your usage patterns are, and you're more upfront in knowing how things work. I need to turn my heater off on that hot month. I forgot. Looked at my usage going up yesterday. I don't want to see a higher bill. So people are going to be more conscious of usage, and we are directed by the California Public Utilities Commission, as you are, to reduce usage for energy efficiency's sake. This will help us bring down the need for extra resources coming into California.
So with that conservation, when do you anticipate recouping your, was it $2 billion? Your $2 billion investment? When does that money start? When does that money come paid off in your analysis?
Well, the way we've done it, it's a five-year process, I've told you. The first several years, let's say, two to three years, we're doing the major capital investment, so that's where we're paying the upfront money, installation of the network, installation of the metering system. That's going to come back down, and then the customer will start to see the benefits in their bill associated with it. Now, granted, these are small increments of cost to the customer, but they will start to see increments of benefit. We anticipate our first 10,000 meters to be up and running by the end of the year, and that's in Cerritos-Lakewood area. And as we said, next year's the big push, and your second quarter. As customers come online, they'll start to be able to utilize the benefits, if you will. But the hard benefits back to the customer, as we pay down the capital investment, as we stop making the capital investment, then we can return things back.
Thank you.
Do you have any idea what your investment is in Glendale?
No, I don't. We never differentiate in that way because we don't look at Glendale as an isolated measure. But if you would take it as, you know, you have 18 DCUs, I had to put 4,000 of them, you could get an investment part out of that, you have.
How much per DCU?
I know, good point. Well, 4,000, 4,000 DCUs, but the point I'm associated with it is I have, we have not broken down by that. I could, see if I could squeeze that out. Lizette Verduco was taking a look at that for me to see if I could differentiate it for you.
Appreciate it.
I don't want to give you a number out of my hat here.
Thank you.
Any else?
I guess my final question has to do, have you been in touch with the United Nations? Is it part of any kind of takeover that you?
No, we removed the batteries for that. I'd just like to invite.
Needed to ask. People are commenting about that.
Okay. I'd like to invite Lizette up just to do the last part. Lizette?
We'll need your name for the record.
Lizette Verduco. And I just wanted to clarify, it's a $1 billion investment, so 1.05. So from the community outreach efforts, I think you got a little bit of a flavor for it in the installation video. So Tony talked about the network outreach, but when we get to the, actually preparing for the meter rollout, we're looking at it, if you actually go to the next slide. Since we're going to be looking at this geographically, and it's going to take us all the way through 2017 to get to the 6-million meters, we're looking at about 90 days, about three months prior to installation in a given area, we'll be getting our community outreach effort. So we'll begin, you know, reaching out to local community organizations and partnering with them to make sure that we're leveraging those local forums to be able to communicate to our customers. About 60 to 30 days prior, we'll have community events and, you know, just presence in the community all throughout the installation process. The 30 days prior is what you saw in the video. Every customer will receive a letter about 30 days prior, letting them know that over the next few weeks, we'll be upgrading the meter to an advanced meter. Installation day, they get a confirmation that it took place, and then post-installation, they'll receive either a postcard or a notice, letting them know that their usage is now available, if they choose to engage with it online or set up an alert of some sort. And then we'll be, you know, securing feedback along the way, so we'll have surveys and such, just to make sure that the installation was a seamless one for our customers.
How many units will you be installing again, total?
6 million.
6 million.
Yeah, by the end of it, we'll have about 6 million, so by 2017, 6 million meters.
And that's $1.05 billion?
$1.05 billion, correct.
Thank you.
I just want comparing costs, though. From what I understand from my conversations with Tony, this is not a full advanced metering system the way Glendale's is. This is only a meter-reading system.
Yeah.
So you can't, I mean, to compare, if you were going to compare costs, are you planning on doing a fuller-type rollout of the technology at some point? Is this the first step, or have you not made that decision yet?
Right now, it's just the meter-reading functionality. So in terms of, we're literally just collecting the interval usage information and being able to get it, you know, electronically. We will have a platform for the future because of the network in place from like our pipeline enhancement programs and things like that.
So at some point, you'll go to a fuller system.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we'll be able to leverage the infrastructure we have in place for our other pipeline safety projects.
Yeah, I'm just curious, because I, you know, after my discussion, I, what I understand is that the gas company's system right now is just to read the meter, whereas the Glendale system is really a whole smart system that is doing a whole lot more reliability and infrastructure, monitoring.
Correct. And I think that that's probably where the difference is from the electric side, because you have the smart grid and, you know, you have that element of the technology. The gas side is a little bit different, so gas and water are probably a little more comparable. But we look at it more as just an investment in our infrastructure, which will allow us, you know, in the future, probably use that network platform for some of our pipeline programs, but different from the sense of the electric side where there's a smart grid component.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, it's certainly a step in the right direction. I'm very happy that you took the time, along with the staff, to come here and make a presentation, not just to us, but to your customers.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, there was just one more slide, but I wanted to show.
Good enough.
Never mind.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you and buddy.
All three of you for coming tonight. I have a card, but there is no decision. This was a presentation, so the speaker can speak at oral communications on the topic. Next, Mr. Clerk.
Next on the agenda at 5:00 are the consent items, including minutes following a routine that may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
And we're going to pull 5D, is that correct?
Mayor, I'll move your major of the consent calendar.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Menucha.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next, please.
Next item is oral communications. This is a portion of oral communications reserved for three-minute event announcements, and there'll be the full five-minute portion, which we'll revisit at the conclusion of all city business.
Leon Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, members of the council and staff. My name is Leon Mayor, and I'm here on behalf of the Friends at the Library. And first of all, I want to advise everybody that Occidental College, our neighbor in Eagle Rock, is celebrating its 125th birthday. It's 125th year of existence, and the Friends at the Library are planning to have one of their prominent professors and authors come to the library sometime next month. We'll give you more details when we get that worked out. Now, we have an event coming up on September 20th, The Black Isle with Sandy Tan. Now, Sandy Tan was born in Singapore. She attended the University of Kent in the United Kingdom, received an MFA in screenwriting from Columbia University. She has shown short films at major films, festivals, and museums around the world. And she lives in Pasadena with her husband, film critic John Powers, and her cat, Nico. The Black Isle is her first novel, and it was written up in the Los Angeles Times by Deborah Vancon, one of the LA Times staff writers. Ms. Vancon said, "Sandy Tan's past is teeming with ghosts." The Pasadena-based filmmaker-turned-novelist, Isnay Seer herself, she's a self-described scaredy cat and doesn't particularly enjoy supernatural books and movies, but her childhood in Singapore in the 1980s was populated with ghost stories and family members who saw spirits. And of course, this Black Isle is located in a teeming British colony in the Indonesian archipelago. So that'll be a great event for September 20th, for people who enjoy that type of novel and that type of person, who is an accomplished writer and movie maker. Now, on September, that's September 20th. Now, on September 27th, we have another interesting program, co-sponsored by the Center for Armenian Remembrance and the Friends at the Library and the library itself, of course. On that date, we're going to have an Italian lady, Antonio Arslan, who's the author of The Road to Smyrna, and she will speak about her book on September 27th, 7 o'clock. Incidentally, most of these items, these events are written up in the news press, so I urge you to look at the news press to compare your notes on that. She's an Italian author, and she was born in Padova, Italy, and she's written over 20 books that have 20, for which she has 20 literary awards. This particular book starts in Aleppo, Syria, and there are four children hiding in a cellar in Aleppo, and that's where the book starts, and you got to come to the library to see where it goes. That should be a very interesting event, and to have a lady, an Italian author known around the world, come to Glendale, we consider that an honor. So come early. Parking is validated for three hours at the neighboring building structure on Maryland. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Next, please.
Next is the hearings at 9A is a public auction for a city-owned properties located at 765 and 749 Glenmore Boulevard and 1644, 1648, and 1652 Gladys Drive. And 9A1 is a motion accepting bid for sale of the properties and authorizing city attorney to open escrow. And 9A2 is a motion rejecting bids. This is an auction, so although there is only one bidder, one qualified bidder who submitted the requisite paperwork, I do have to go through the process, so if the council and mayor indulge me, I'll have to end at the podium and take the bids officially.
Okay, I will open the auction. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Najarian.
After discussion with the city attorney, it appears that one of the bidders, perhaps the only bidder, how can I say this? Is a source of income to me, and therefore, I'm not sure that the council is exercising much discretion in this process, but in the abundance of caution and to avoid any appearance of a conflict of interest, I'm going to recuse myself until this matter is concluded.
All right. I hereby open the auction of city-owned surplus property at 765 Glenmore Boulevard, 749 Glenmore Boulevard, 1644 Gladys Drive, 1648 Gladys Drive, and 1652 Gladys Drive, and turn over the sale to the city clerk, who will act as the auctioneer for this sale.
Thank you, Mayor. As we only have one bidder, this may be slightly less ceremonious than some of our more action-packed auctions in the past. I'm foregoing the use of the gavel for this one. This auction is for the sale of five residentially-zoned properties at 765 Glenmore Boulevard, 749 Glenmore Boulevard, 1644 Gladys Drive, 1648 Gladys Drive, and 1652 Gladys Drive, Glendale. Portions of the residents may have sustained damage due to the severe rainstorms of winter 2004 and '05. Therefore, the sale will be on an as-is, where-is basis. The successful bidder will assume the risk of the quality and condition of the properties. The city makes no representation expressed or implied that the properties will be or can be developed. At such time as the purchaser seeks to improve or demolish any improvements on the properties, the purchaser shall be required to meet all city codes and other applicable laws and requirements in effect at the time. This is a cash payment sale. The successful bidder must pay the full amount of the sale price within five business days after the date of the public auction, September 11th, 2012. Otherwise, the successful bidder's deposit will be forfeited. However, for good cause, the council may extend the time limitation. Before a bidder makes a bid, he or she must state that his or her bid is subject to a real estate broker or salesperson's commission and the amount of that commission. And this public auction is being conducted with the understanding that the city reserves the right to reject any and all bids for any reason whatsoever. And it is our understanding that there is a commission, that the bidder is represented, and that commission is 5%. Okay. City clerk will now open up the bidding, and we're going to open it up for $707,000. The initial bid amount is 7, I'm sorry, $700,000, and we have one qualified bidder who has submitted deposit for bids in that amount. Do I hear $707,000? Going once? Going twice? Seeing as there is no $707,000 bid, we now declare this auction closed at the cost of $700,000. Mr. Mayor, the bidding is now concluded, and the property is located at 765 Glenmore Boulevard, 749 Glenmore Boulevard, 1644 Gladys Drive, 1648 Gladys Drive, and 1652 Gladys Drive, with the highest bid being $700,000, the bidder number one. I submit this bid to the council for a vote. I submit this bid to the council for a vote on the motion to accept the bid and direct the city attorney to open escrow. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Weaver.
Yes, city attorney, if I could put in a bid to try to drive the price up, but he says I was out of place. So with that, I'll move. If the hearing is closed, I'll move 9A1.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Garcia, just to be sure, so that people understand, why don't you give us an idea once again? These properties are being sold. We took possession because of the landslide and main damage.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, members of council. These properties were purchased by the city as a result of settlement or litigation resulting from the 2005 rainstorms. These properties were previously, we previously attempted to auction them, but were not successful in receiving a minimum bid. They were parcelled together as one parcel, they're being sold together as one parcel for purposes of this sale, and as just concluded, the minimum bid of $700,000 will be accepted by the city upon a vote of council.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion in the second. Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Mnuchin.
Yes.
Najarian. Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next, please.
Mr. Mayor, I now declare the properties at 765 Glenmore Boulevard, 749 Glenmore Boulevard, 1644 Gladys Drive, 1648 Gladys Drive, and 1652 Gladys Drive, sold to the highest bidder at $700,000. Thank you.
All right, very good. Hopefully, these properties will be built on and returned to their former residential Next, Mr. Clerk.
Next is oral communication. This is a five-minute portion. Discussion is limited to items not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to this speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. See Madam Mayor for the matter to the appropriate department for investigation or report.
Tony Passarella, followed by Mike Mohill.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, viewing public, at least those that aren't tuned into the theatrical miniseries that comes around every four years, known as the Mr. Mayor, if you have the power, I would like to request that you move the five-minute portion of oral communications up to the front of the meeting as opposed to where it is now. I just want to start with that. I will comment on the advanced metering at a later date. There is a disease that's rampant and is destroying the nation. I don't know if you've heard about it. As opposed to me ranting for five minutes on the subject, I want to read quotes from authors and other professional people in regards to this disease that is spreading and destroying our nation. It's called apathy. Slums may very well be breeding grounds of crime, but middle-class suburbs are incubators of apathy and delirium. Apathy and evil, the two work hand in hand. They are the same, really. Evil wills it, apathy allows it. Evil hates the innocent and the defenseless, most of all. Apathy doesn't care, as long as it's not personally inconvenienced. Wherever there is degeneration, apathy, there also is sexual perversion, cold depravity, miscarriage, premature old age, grumbling youth. There is decline in the arts, indifference to science, and injustice in all forms. Apathy, not hate, is a breeding ground of crime. The middle-class suburbs are incubators of apathy. I just read that one. We may not find a cure for most evils, but it has found no remedy for the worst of them all, the apathy of human beings. In better moments, I think apathy has purposes sleep. In my worst moments, when I'm trying to fix it and get rid of it, I call it feeling lazy, depressed, or useless. Apathy adds up, in the long run, to cowardice. What is called apathy is, I believe, a feeling of helplessness on the part of the ordinary citizen, a feeling of impotence in the face of enormous power. It is not that people are apathetic. They do not care about what is going on, but don't know what to do about it, so they do nothing and appear indifferent. By far, the most dangerous foe we have to fight is apathy. I hope everybody's listening here tonight. Indifference for whatever cause, not from a lack of knowledge, but from carelessness, from absorption in other pursuits, from a contempt and breed of self-satisfaction. So much attention is paid to the aggressive sins, such as violence and cruelty and greed, with all their tragic effects, that too little attention is paid to the passive sins, such as apathy and laziness, which in the long run can have more devastating effect. I can tell you, there's three people that come to this podium on a regular basis that are not apathetic. They are passionate, courageous, and people based on principle. They are Herbert Milano, Harry Zavos, and Mike Mohill, and the people need to listen to these people. If we had an army of people like Mike Mohill, Harry Zavos, and Herbert Milano, we wouldn't have the problems in this city we have now and in this nation. We need an army of people that are not apathetic, that are not indifferent, that do have passion, and are willing to stand up on principle and fight for what they believe in. Thank you. My name is Tony Passarella.
Mike Mohill.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, councilmembers, fellow Glendaleans. My name is Mike Mohill. Councilman Najarian, last week you failed again to tell the public the true options in fighting the union on pension reform. You chose not to tell the public what the cities of San Diego and San Jose did to fight their pension liabilities. You were more concerned our city might be sued by the unions rather than looking for solutions. In order to save the city millions of dollars, you could have told the fire department long ago you wanted to change the number of personnel on a fire engine from four to three, as in Los Angeles County. Yes, Councilman Najarian, pension reform is complicated, as our city attorney has said. You have tried nothing new, other than creating a new two-tier salary structure and raising the retirement age from 50 to 55, while your constituents live on a small social security check and have to work to age 67. One should not have been surprised by your actions. You have been a major benefactor of their political campaign monies and endorsements for the years and through the years. You would rather defend the unions than put the interests of the public first. In addition, Councilwoman Friedman, it is a shame you do not understand the differences between California Proposition 26 and the city charter. Proposition 26 deals with hidden taxes in the case of the proposed electrical rate increase by this council. Because of the public pressure and political election next April, council decided to postpone this rate increase. As far as the charter, the $21 million transfer money from the GWP to the general fund is not the electrical rate increases as that is defined in Proposition 26. Mrs. Freeman, you do not have a law degree, and therefore, for you to attack a well-respected professor of law in the understanding and the interpretation of the law shows the public your lack of understanding of the law. The charter explicitly states, "Only time the city can transfer money from the GWP to the general fund is from the surplus fund if any money is left over," which must be at the end of the year, and not from the revenue fund at mid-year as a direct line item. In addition, Mrs. Freeman, you have morphed. When it comes to people's concern on their health issues, while running for office in 2009, you were friendly with the cell tower people who came before the city council. You made their concerns your concerns, and you became their champion and were instrumental in having the phone companies make significant changes. On the other hand, once you were elected on council, you were not sympathetic to the health concerns of the smart meter people. You morphed. In 2009, the political actions of both the firefighters and the Police Officers Association openly endorsed councilmembers Freeman, Najarian, Quintero, and Weaver. My fellow Glendaleans, the city is in worse financial condition than before these individuals came to council. They can blame the economy, they can blame Proposition 13, they can blame Sacramento, and they can blame Washington, D.C., but they are the ones who refuse to hold the line on wages and pensions. As I said last week, councilmembers are always looking for ways to raise revenue. They have increased our water rates, and now they want to raise our electric rates. We have already experienced increased trash fees, permit fees, utility user fees, library fees, parking fees, outdoor dining fees, dog fees, design review fees, and now they want our kids to be dragged into this financial quagmire of politics by making even resident children pay a fee for using the Verdugo Skate Park. As our quality of life has deteriorated under your leadership, this council is failing in true pension reform, and sadly, one day, our city manager may have to tell the public bankruptcy is the final solution. Thank you. My name is Mike Mohill.
That's my last card.
Let me make a statement.
Mr. Weaver first, and Mr. Najarian.
I hope Mr. Mohill understands when he pulls papers to run for city council, he can no longer give campaign speeches to us here or the public at home. He is going around town, going into all the businesses, telling them everything about why he ought to be elected to council. Same stuff we heard here tonight, same thing that's planted in Vanguard, word for word. I just hope Mr. Mayor, in January, when he files, he's not allowed to give campaign speeches here. Thank you.
Mr. Najarian.
Thank you. With regard to Mr. Passarelli, he did forget, I mean, listing individuals who come to council with conviction and firm beliefs. I'm not sure if you neglected to leave out, or whether it was purposely, leave out Ms. Chinook Ramirez, who comes to the dais with much the same zealousness that some of the other speakers do. I don't think it's because she's a woman, but maybe you, well, I don't want to, I'm not going to accuse you of being prejudiced or anything like that. With regard to Mr. Mohill, we keep trying to explain this to you time and time again, Mr. Mohill. I really want to communicate with you and let you know what goes on in the city, because we repeat it to you so often. I'm not sure if you're just not understanding it, or whether you're choosing to ignore what we're trying to explain. And what we're trying to explain is that the city of San Diego, the city of San Jose, have entirely different retirement systems than the city of Glendale has. So to point to those two cities and say Glendale, you can do exactly what San Jose and San Diego have done, it's just wrong. You just can't keep repeating that. If I sound a little frustrated, I mean, to be honest, I am, because I do, I do want to educate you and let you know that there are different types of retirement systems. It's in the newspaper. I mean, you got the headline news. You had your headline news routine going on for many, many weeks and months. They are different types of systems, and Glendale just cannot copy those actions of those two cities and impose it unilaterally on our employees. The other mistake you made, and you keep repeating, is, I mean, you kind of threw away the second-tier issue and make it seem as though that's not a big thing. Well, it is a pretty big thing, and we were one of the first ones to do that. But you said that's all you did. But that's not all we've done, Mr. Mohill. We've made the employees pay not only their entire contribution to PERS, but much of what the city is supposed to contribute to PERS. Now, I challenge you, challenge you, Mr. Mohill, go and find another city in California that has a more strict employee retirement contribution program than Glendale. I forgot something else. We also have imposed on them a very high burden on any healthcare increases. I believe most of our bargaining units are at 50% of any healthcare increase. The employees have to bear that burden. So please, Mr. Mohill, I'm happy to discuss the issue with you on a factual basis, but, and this isn't the first time I've said it, and I apologize if I seem sort of frustrated because I'm, part of my job and part of our job as a council is to get information to the public. We've tried to get this through to you, but you're just not getting it. Once you accept those facts, then we can talk about what the next step can be. Maybe work with the legislation in Sacramento that is being put through. Maybe send resolutions and correspondence that would encourage them to take an even more strict role in that. But you're just misstating the facts, Mr. Mohill. I'm sorry. I feel like I failed in getting the information to you.
Freeman.
I just wanted to respond a little bit to Mr. Passarelli. He came up and talked about the dangers of apathy, and about that, I agree, that we certainly want people to be engaged and to be aware and to take part, and that's a good message. But he seemed very frustrated that more people aren't kind of coming here and yelling at us on a regular basis, and he takes that as a sign that we have an apathetic city. And, you know, I've spent the last three years in this office, and I've had a lot of time to go out and really interact with the community, and I find that the city of Glendale is the opposite of apathetic. We have hundreds and hundreds of residents who are involved in service clubs, Rotary, Seroptimist, Kiwanis, and others, and Lions Club, and they, on a weekly basis, give of themselves their money and their time to help their fellow citizens. We have thousands of residents who are very engaged and involved in nonprofits in the city, and we have hundreds, probably hundreds, of nonprofit groups that operate in the city through the work of volunteers. And all of those people do that for no compensation to themselves, because they want to help, whether it's with the arts or with children or whatever the particular nonprofit's involved in. They run on the sweat equity of our local residents, who are the volunteers. I find a community that's very engaged, that's very involved, and the opposite of apathetic. So I hope that Mr. Passarelli and others can see beyond those who maybe have something, have anger at the city or a certain concern that they come here, that I think that being involved and not apathetic comes in a lot of forms, and I find Glendale to be an extremely involved and engaged city, and that the people who live here, by and large, give an amazing amount of themselves back to the community and are, I think, the opposite of apathetic. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, any other comments? New business? Mr. Weaver.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the city attorney, Bea, hereby is authorized to initiate legal action in Superior Court. The name of the action, the defendants, and the nature of the action shall be disclosed The name of the action, the defendants, and the nature of the action shall be disclosed to any person upon inquiry once the action has commenced. The city attorney is further authorized to incur any and all expenses necessary in connection with said matter.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, just a quick reminder, next week in the evening, we will not have an evening meeting, as there are no items on the agenda, only in the afternoon session.
Roll call.
Yes.
Mnuchin.
Yes.
Jarien.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Eric Quintero.
Yes.
So we adjourn.
Okay, before we do, once again, next week, there will be no city council meeting in the evening.